Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Dover Select Board meeting on Tuesday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty five. To order. Any public comments? We all have an agenda except for us. Okay, additions or deletions to the agenda?
Just be hyper aware about Zoom bombing.
Oh, yes. Why don't you do that, Patrick?
Okay, so just for for the benefit of the public and and the members of the select board. So last week at the Water Task Force meeting, our meeting was Zoom bombed by someone who was able to to. We were, you know, taking the approach of if someone shows up, you let them into the meeting. Well, in this case, it was it was just set up for somebody who was going to Zoom bomb and basically put pornography up on the screen during the course of the meeting. And it was pretty vile stuff.
And and it happened today with the mover meeting.
Yeah.
Another Zoom bomb, same thing.
It happened to us at the windows on the waste management.
Yeah, and 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 so we have, I know that we have coming up the public forum on the on the water feasibility study. And we took, I met with Tabby today, talked about how we're going to structure to try to make sure, hopefully, it doesn't happen then. While preserving access.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah. Well, Wilmington was Zoom bombed a year and a half ago, and now you have to actually register to be to be entered. You had to pre-register to attend the meeting if you're not attending in person.
Would would it make sense for us, in in the spirit of making it just someone who wants to do this, take, have to go through at least another step? Maybe we'd refresh our meeting IDs and everything like this, so that's fresh. I don't know if that makes a difference, but that's something that Tabby and I discussed today was possibly.
Be the worst. So be ready, Shannon.
Well, so that's why I think we have a waiting room for everything.
Right, at once, but sometimes you don't recognize the name, you think, well, it's the voter.
But sometimes. I would be hesitant to just like you can message people, you can decline them, and you can tell them no. You've done that before, and by now, it's too big for.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Yeah, so it it appears to be happening a lot now.
So the specific things we did talk about for the meeting that I thought these were all good ideas, they came from Chrissy, asking the engineer, she contributed to this. We're going to have a a meeting ID, so that to actually get into the meeting, you have to be able to go into Zoom, enter the meeting ID, enter the password. Those will be publicly available when people come into the meeting, and you won't have video or you won't have audio to host or whoever's operating will actually have to enable that for for someone. And, you know, the hope is that putting those steps in will will prevent it. We'll find out, hopefully, that's good, but.
Thank you. Any other additions or deletions or comments? Okay, next, we're going to move to do one of the things we love to do with Marco, set the twenty five, twenty six tax rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've I've come up for air, so I don't know, you know, I'm being buried in the numbers, but they are. As what I've given you, it looks like our municipal rate. Not bad, two point nine cents. For a total municipal rate of fifty three point five three four three, a homestead education rate as given by the state. Two point one six nine two, non-homestead rate, one point nine nine seven. So those are off, homestead education rate is up six point seven cents, non-homestead, three point three cents. So for a total two point seven oh three five for the total homestead rate, two point five three one three for the total non-homestead rate. So compared to the last couple of years. It's pretty modest increase. There were also some changes to the mechanics and how the the CLA, there's a statewide adjustment as well. That I played into a little bit, I think, in our favor in the way the math works, but.
And thank you for attaching all that.
You're welcome.
To it as well. Joe, do you have a question?
So so we're not being as penalized for CLA this year or are you?
I don't know if it's penalized just to change in the the
Where they
They they they take our, they take every town in CLA invited by statewide adjustment, so it's it's nothing. They're taking like the, not only fair market value in your town, but they're looking at the fair market value statewide.
Yeah, it's more complicated, but. So Marco, you also said that we have, as of six thirty, a four hundred thousand dollar
Correct.
uh surplus in the general fund and ninety thousand in the highway fund. What is your proposal on that?
I would not buy the rate down, not given these modest increases, because then when you buy the rate down one year, it it is a little lopsided effect with the following year.
Rumor reigning the other way, yeah.
So I would, I would just go status quo with the users, they are with the the surplus remains in the in the going back, so it's it's being invested, it's being lost, so.
Good. Questions?
So so I'm sorry. So we have a surplus of four hundred thousand. And we have a surplus now. So you're advising us to make our surplus higher, so as a board, do we need to have that high of a surplus?
Well, it it doesn't like add to your surplus every year, the funds just remain in your in your cash balance.
So then if we have some unexpected expenses.
Like the bridge.
Like the bridge, yeah. But we would, we would have to, I think we would have to warn that and move the money, I'm I'm guessing.
You would have.
Yeah.
Yes, it would be a mechanism to do that.
We still have to pay fast.
So I'm much.
Yes.
So Marco, about the surplus. So the surplus is asked at a point of time, it says, as of June thirty.
June thirty, right.
So so that means, I'm trying to think how we generated that surplus so quickly.
Additional higher than expected interest earnings, higher than expected the lingering tax penalty, and we don't have some some categories that on the expense side came in lower.
Right.
Budget management wise, so we add all that together, there's a still a nice healthy surplus.
And we still have, okay, so that's a carrot for for the end of the last year, because the last year was the six thirty, right? That's it.
Right.
So we're coming into the new year with the surplus, you're recommending that we don't touch it down because it's the beginning of the year, there's a lot that could.
Correct, that I I don't, if if the numbers were, the story were a little different in terms of the percentage increase, I would we could be, we could have a little different discussion, but I would just go move on.
And we haven't collected any taxes yet, because we haven't, so.
No, we have, no.
So obviously, so, yeah, so.
The other thing to note was the grant list was only, I only saw an increase of about two point six million, which
Well, we lost six million on the
Yeah.
Three pound power. Yeah. That was a pretty big big hit, so.
Oh, right.
Yeah, that's
With the gross gain, that's all.
Yeah, it would have been like eight point six or.
Well, and we'll see with the re-arrazo, things, you know, which is next year, but that's on the bottom.
Sarah, so my the the dollar change per hundred thousand value is approximately hundred dollars.
Correct, yeah, it's about on the, the homestead is ninety six dollars per hundred thousand, non-homestead sixty two dollars per thousand.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other discussion? Somebody want to make a motion?
Uh, I make a motion that we set the, um, do I need to set them separately?
Yes.
If if you would, uh, involve me to have the municipal rate set as well as the totals, so if you.
Okay, so I make a motion that we set the municipal tax rate at point five three four three. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, with the homestead education rate of two point one six nine two, non-homestead education rate of one point nine nine seven zero. For a total homestead rate of two point seven zero three five and non-homestead rate total of two point five three one three. Second.
Anything else from anybody? Call of favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next phone question.
Now we're moving on to town clerk to consider the COT Systems property check service. And Andy, you're on.
Yeah, so, um, I wrote you a little letter. And basically in the news lately, maybe you've seen stuff about deep fraud or title fraud. You know, I heard a news story recently, you know, it went from like five thousand incidents to fifty thousand incidents in the same period of time, the past couple of years. Basically, what happens is somebody files records documents in the land records, fraudulent taking ownership of your house, and then they get a mortgage on your house, and then they disappear. Or they sell your house to an unsuspecting third party, take the money, and they go. They can do this because a lot of times buyers are out of state, they deal with a real estate attorney through email, whatever, and they're willing to forge documents. Some of our property owners have approached me about this, very worried about it. You know, a lot of property owners across the country are worried about it. COT Systems, who handles our online land records, offers a service, which we as the town would have to pay for. Where a property owner can sign up for free, enter their name, and they will be notified through email uh in real time if anybody records a document with their name on it. It can prevent somebody from filing fraudulent documents or recording fraudulent documents. Statistically, I have to record what's given to me, provided it appears to be legit. But a lot of times, the the process for this kind of a crime is a two-step process, and you would be notified after step one, and maybe no money has changed hands. Which is a lot easier to deal with if there's no third party who thinks they own your house and they pay three hundred grand for it, or a bank is out the money of a mortgage. The service would cost the town a seven hundred dollar startup fee plus two hundred dollars a year, which is special pricing for a blue town clerk in Vermont. It's more expensive than that in bigger cities, but we asked for it, and they they gave us this pricing, which I think is okay. It would be paid for the same way we pay for the other COT services, which is somewhat over a thousand bucks a year currently, we're paying COT. And it would be paid for our the Restoration and Digitization Fund. It costs fifteen dollars per page to record stuff in the land records. And four dollars of that by statute goes into a Restoration and Digitization Fund. The state did that so the towns could digitize and not go to their taxpayers and ask for money in small time, we're not doing, including Dover. Anyway, so we get on a slow year like twenty eighteen before COVID, I think we got seven. If we had been charging the four dollars per page Restoration and Digitization Fund, it was one dollar at that point. It would have been, income would have been seventeen grand. At the height of the selling, buying boom after COVID, I think we pulled in thirty six thousand that year. And we're only spending four for the for the service, this would only cost an additional two per year, two hundred per year after that initial startup fee, I think it's worth it. Um, and I think it would make some of our voters and taxpayers happy to give them some peace of mind that they've been asking for. When I spend money out of the Restoration and Digitization Fund, I come to you, and I have a little page, if you don't have it, I have it right here. Um, the contract is something I would sign, but the authorization um is something that you sign, I, Mary Lou did it before I got here, and it seems to work well when we agree on how to spend that money. And that's what I'm asking for.
Questions about?
Sounds great. Makes sense.
Sounds good. Yes, Mike.
Andy, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So when I reach out through land records to find out landowners, a lot of the times, I I only have an address to go by. What are you going to get as as far as uh emails or phone numbers to get in contact with people?
So I'm not going to get in contact with people, it's the COT system, the third party who handles our online land records that will when you sign up with COT for the service, you'll give them your email. And then and then COT will notify you by email if your name is is on a recorded document.
So so is there anybody in the town can get that information?
COT doesn't share it with anybody. I'm, that was one of my questions, and I was thinking, hey, you know, it's not really a good idea to have a service that our taxpayers, their information's going to be shared, shared, and COT said, no, we don't do that.
And it's completely voluntary, you don't have to sign it.
That's correct.
Other questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize Andy to pay the seven hundred dollar startup and recurring two hundred dollar per year fee for COT Systems Property Check Service paid from the Restoration and Digitalization Fund.
All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, thank you very much.
And you want us to do the tax rate too, Marco, correct?
That'd be great, thank you.
All right. Anything else, Andy?
Nope.
Moving on to the police department then, the stuff, discuss PD technology in car cameras. Okay.
So I've talked about it a couple of times that our in-house systems are outdated. And we're at a point where a company, the company itself doesn't even exist. It's been bought by a few other companies, that we, we still work with one of those companies. So that's how we're able to continue to using those, but they do not service them anymore, and one of ours is completely dead now. We've done everything we can to get it working again. But there's no support for it, and it's just an applet. So one of our cruisers that we use for normal control is currently without an in-house camera system, which is not ideal. So we're looking to continue with Safely, who we use for our body cameras and and our evidentiary in-house system, the cloud storage, all that, it's their system to just be added to your car and added to our cloud storage system. And we have the the quote, I believe you guys have a copy of. So the first part is for the hardware. The second part for the setup of it, it's the the first two things in that, the twelve, almost thirteen hundred and the six hundred for training. Those two things would be a one-time cost if we, if and when we need to get more of these in the future, we wouldn't have to pay that part again. It would be a one-time setup and one-time training for staff on how to use the new system. The eight hundred dollar installation is someone coming to us from New Jersey installing it in a new car. Um, and it said remote project management and remote training, they're going to do that in-house for two days with us while they're here installing the system. So.
And it includes a five-year extended
Yeah, so the last part is the thousand dollars extra gets two extra years on the three-year warranty to make it a five-year warranty. So that would be anything that goes wrong with it in five years, we're going to take care of it, so we're talking. So that's the total, um. In PD technology, we have eight thousand dollars in the capital equipment, which is just under that. We already used some of it this year to get some new things for the new cruiser. Been talking to Marco, we figured out that since since the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year, we put almost twenty, including this year with that eight thousand, just under twenty seven thousand dollars into PD technology throughout those years. And only spent about five thousand in those five years, and that was one time getting a new uh small data computer for the car, one of the cars. That PD technology line is always good for those mobile data computers, but we've been, we've been doing more life out of them than we expected. So that's why we haven't been using that every year, it was sixty three hundred, we raised it to eight thousand last year, so. Long story short, in the past five years, there's about twenty one thousand dollars. I'll call it extra, that we haven't spent from that old technology line. So I'm just looking to use at least a four or so to get one, unless you guys want, need to get any more with any of that extra money.
And so that, that's in the capital fund?
Capital equipment, yes.
Yes.
Let's call it unspent, let's not call it extra.
Sure, extra. I didn't sound like coming out of you.
You're right, I think we should get this one, see how it works, and then we'll, we can reevaluate, then, you know. I think getting the one that obviously is badly needed and getting trained on it and all that stuff, and we'll, we'll move over forward at some point, budget time is coming, it's not that far away, so. So, but that's my opinion, other opinions?
I think that sounds reasonable.
Sounds, definitely makes sense.
That
That was committed.
That doesn't tell me anything.
I can just remember doing the cameras and now we're buying camera with them.
Those were body cameras.
Yeah, those body cameras.
How long did the car cameras, how long were the car cameras on for, probably?
The the newest one that we have is over five years old.
From a company who doesn't exist anymore?
Yeah, L three, which was bought by another company, which was then bought by Safely, so that's why they were still helping us out with it, because we stayed within that umbrella, but they have washed their hands of all of three products.
So it seems like a life expectancy, cameras are about five years.
That's why they saw a five-year works.
Yeah. Also.
Yes.
Right, can someone tell me what the in-car camera reports? Any from the car, front and back?
One of that, but it's on a license plate.
No, no, it's not, it's totally separate function. We can turn it on ourselves, or it turns on automatically, we turn it on, it lets on. But it's to report it in reaction to the public, just like our, a lot of our cameras, it just hurts on the road to to record those happening on the road.
Okay, now, do you have anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we authorize Chief Arda Gas to spend eight thousand four hundred thirty dollars with Safely Law Enforcement for the in-car video camera system and accessory elements of that purchase.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving along, new business, consider the fuel, oil, fuel and oil bids. Which Jeanette has compiled very nicely here.
Yeah. It's all right. Um, yeah, so you'll notice we received three bids. Cota, Cota, Dead River, and Nidos. And so that is obviously still lower bidder, we've been dealing with for many years.
Well, they've been there.
And we do have some several credits from this past year that will be put towards the pre-buy. And then, which is also a good thing, that we allow us to do.
So the yes, it says no base for the kerosene and the propane, does that mean they're not, we're just going to take the rate at the time of purchase?
Yes. It would basically be market price, I asked them why they hadn't, because some of us, they do fit on those. I didn't get an answer back to that.
I guess, I guess it's interesting that that Cota simple bid, whatever the market is, that's twenty percent or twenty cents. And and they just said, oh, I could have bid, presumably they're expecting volatility and they.
Yeah, and and also we get very little kerosene and propane, so a lot of the bigger companies won't really deal with us because there's whereas the heating oil is definitely a bigger.
Any other comments?
So, so I do have, so are you recommending which one you recommend?
My, yeah.
Okay.
I would recommend Mido. Yes. We've been dealing with them for many years, and they've always provided good service for us.
We're just down the road.
And they're just down the road, if anything, the bond, they come quite quickly to help us.
Where's the propane mill in the seven thirty?
Propane is fully at the town hall for cooking and the school.
The school.
At the school. Yes, they're separately.
Right, the majority is at the school.
Yes.
And truly not.
Are we using some for the generators?
Well, we we've gone over this year after year to some suburban, as they proclaim since.
Yes, yep.
So it is unbelievable. I don't want to go there.
Yeah.
If you want to ask later, I'll explain it.
Sure. Yeah, so make a motion that we purchase kerosene, summer diesel, winter diesel, and propane from Nidos. Heating oil at a rate of two seventy nine per gallon, kerosene at market rate, summer diesel at two ninety four per gallon, winter diesel at three twenty two per gallon, propane at market rate, for a total of the bid of the maybe put the total in.
I don't, I don't think so, because we're just
We don't know the total, actually.
No, we don't. We get, we can guess.
I mean, the the exact number for the pre-buy is that thirty seven thousand eight thirty one, so.
For a pre-buy of thirty seven thousand eight hundred thirty one dollars seventy seven cents.
Sorry. Any other details?
So the motion is to accept the proposal, the proposed pricing, is that words of the government?
Yes. Joe?
I've mentioned this before, uh, on the propane, which I know best. Uh, the town bought as far as I can tell, eighty gallons of propane last year between the police department and the highway department. Those tanks represent yeah, pick the number, eight thousand, somewhere between eight and ten, plus the infrastructure. Is Nido going to replace those tanks to sell the town eighty gallons of propane a year?
No, the answer is no, thank you, Jeanette.
Is what is, what is the expense of the town to replace those tanks? I believe they're currently paying around two sixty a gallon propane. And I know that because for some reason, the town was part of my group, although I was unaware that, whoever, I might go back to when they were decided to put the tanks in for the generators. And Rich was involved. Joe, I don't quite understand how it's feasible. How it's feasible. For somebody to say eighty gallons of propane a year. And have to put in. You know, a thousand gallons, and I could please provide another thousand of the. It's a landfill.
So.
Yes, Jim.
All of those instruments are urgency use, so we need to have a large tank. If we did not have electricity for a longer length of period. With my understanding, so to generate, they're generating. So Suburban just happens to be the one that installed it with whatever grant money that we got, or we did whatever, from my understanding, you can look at it again. And. If Suburban allows us to be in the Dover propane, it could save us a couple dollars, but I believe you have to. Use enough gallons before not using almost suburban tanks. It doesn't make any sense for Nidos to take over that because of the use of the propane. So we're kinda in a thing where we're stuck. Having two different propane companies, one for the school and Dover. And for the Dover, the co- commons for the cooking, because that we installed and hired the company to do, and then the others in Suburban, which is, I believe, for a generator. But I see what you're saying, Jim, with being buyers, but we don't spend enough propane, I don't think that'll allow us. To be, if they will, you can definitely check with Jeanette, and if we can save a couple dollars on a little bit for you. You know, wherever you give money to be, you know, to the. Within a corporation, so.
Well, this is one.
Yes.
I mean, one of the things uh certainly my propane group, there's such a major based model. And. Of which is, as far as I can see, if the town of Dover is now subscribed, which I don't care. So it doesn't bother me no place. But what I do know is you're paying a tank rental charge on those tanks, I believe, of a hundred dollars a year. So if you join my group. For fifty dollars a year. That tank rental charge would go away. That'd be on the top of that, that'd be a savings of a hundred and fifty. Which you could apply that hundred and fifty dollars to the threshold. Of two sixty if a gallon of your bank propane.
Comments?
How is that, if it, it's gonna save us some money without a lot, I just, I don't know, it's suburban. You know, again, just looking at your club, it's usually you have to have eight hundred gallons of usage, we're only using eighty gallons, it doesn't, doesn't seem like suburban is gonna wanna do it, but. What a man so.
Yes.
They, well, it's all applicable usage in my group, I have. Your group to use on the sixty dollars a year.
Yeah.
And they get group pricing.
I was gonna say, that's my situation.
If you can, if Jeanette can follow up, then we can save some money by, you know, doing the the subscription thing, it's. We'll do it.
Yes.
Now, I don't care whether you join or not, I definitely don't. I mean, I, because I had no absolute run in the whole thing, but. Uh. You know, the, the group itself has meant quite a bit for the community. Because we just recently passed a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar mark that's gone back. To five oh one three threes in like.
Jeanette, do you have time to investigate this? Be, be honest, please.
Well, I guess I just, I'm not. If the tanks are owned by Suburban and we are currently contracted with Suburban, we can still join your group?
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
I said, if, if the tanks are, the tanks are owned by Suburban and they are servicing them, we contract with them. So we can switch to your program, even though that is already in place?
For some reason. And this goes back to when Rich was involved in, and he didn't have a body group. So I think. See, I, I was somewhat involved in getting the tanks in. In talking to Fer, Harry Bieber about. Doing this. That I think he probably just. Automatically pushing my group to get the person. Now, certainly. At what you're paying now, two sixty gallons is well, or a market rate. It's probably a dollar or not great. Maybe even more for the second minimal usage. I see people paying six plus a gallon for that kind of usage. I mean, it's such a small amount of money, that the issue is, what do you do with the propane tanks? Are you gonna buy thousand gallon tanks? Yourself? As far as I know, Nido does not supply thousand gallon tanks, we might get two five hundreds. But. For eighty gallons of propane a year. It'll seem like a win at the end.
Yes, Patrick.
So, so what I saw, what I saw was presented here was an assumption of much more propane than, than, than Jim's talking about. Uh and it sounds like we have two different things, one of them is. These propane tanks, I'm not sure which location it's. Right, but that's not what this is, or is that, is this part of that, what's in the proposal?
No.
Right. So you could investigate, I'm trying to kind of cut through, so you can investigate whether it makes sense to join Jim's buying group. Suburban already has those, Jim, your buying groups in Suburban, as I recall, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Even if you don't join the group, you're still getting my pricing. Unless I call and say, hey, they're not in my group.
You're right, you can, you can investigate whatever.
Doesn't make any sense for me to do that.
That doesn't affect the motion that's before, that's what I'm, I'm trying to drive to, that doesn't affect that, so that could be something that you can investigate, we can.
Jeanette, you have more to say?
I guess I just don't understand how we would have gotten into your group without me knowing that we were in your group.
This goes back to when those tanks were originally put in and they were looking for a supplier. And I had a binding at that time. And Rich was involved somewhat. And. How are you gonna put into my group, I don't know, you're certainly never paid to join the group with them in my database. Which I don't care about, I mean, fifty bucks, we're gonna make correct my group. I mean, you know, if you. If you, if you do decide to join the group, you know, just fifty bucks. You know, I can go to the, to Suburban and easily say, hey, you know, they're paying a tank rental, you know, I can make a stink about this. And all of a sudden, you have two hundred dollars to the upside, which is a net of one fifty.
And. I was. So I would say, Jeanette. I wouldn't, I wouldn't make this a high, a high priority, um obviously, you're, you're extremely busy. And if it, if, I mean, for the amount we're gonna save, I get it, but it's not. Your time is very valuable and you're, you're pulled in a hundred different ways, so I don't. I don't know how to tell you to do more, um you know?
No, I mean, I could certainly make a call.
Okay. There you go. There you go, Jim.
I, I think my first call would be to Nido, to say, hey, we give two thousand gallons, we tank, we are.
They've already looked into that, they're not gonna try to amount of propane that we're gonna use. That's the problem, that's why we saved this course. Years in the past. Reason why we've saved this course with this bourbon, because that no one's gonna, no one's gonna replace the tanks, the amount of propane we use. So we're in Suburban and. You know, unless they all of a sudden charge us a thousand dollars a year for the rental, then we differ, a hundred bucks a year is. It's not enough to change, because you know how much tank cost and installing it these days, it's expensive. So it's not worth their time and effort, any other company, because the amount of propane we use, so we're just fortunate, we already paid them to put the paint there. During the, the process of putting these generators.
So, Jeanette, if you don't, can't seem to find time to do it. Don't be alarmed, if you had time to do a phone call, I mean, I'm sorry, it's such a small amount of money, I don't know.
I know, that's.
What, I mean, what is she gonna, she's gonna like, the only thing that makes sense is if we can get replacement tanks.
Yeah, but I think, as Joe said, I think we've gone down the trouble.
Yes, we have.
And just because it's not. I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
I don't even know either. Okay, well, thank you for your thoughts, Jim, I appreciate it, but. Um I think we are gonna stay put this year. All right, so we've got the motion, and second?
I said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Unfinished business, complete letter of intent for Blue Brook Bridge repairs. I have that here somewhere. Somewhere. Okay. This is to the agency of transportation Dover Bridge number fourteen on TH number eight, class three over Blue Brook. The select board of Dover, and this is already pre-checked, will properly repair the deck, anticipated. Date of completion of this repair is September to, or late September, early October twenty twenty five. Dover will notify this day in writing. When work is complete. And do we need to sign this too on top of our names?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
So, somebody wanna make a motion that we sign this, that we intend to, are intent?
So I make a motion that to authorize the select board to sign the. Uh State of Vermont Agency of Transportation document regarding bridge number fourteen over Blue Brook Road or over Blue Brook. Um confirming that we will repair the deck late September, early October.
Second. Discussions? All in favor? All right, you guys voting on this?
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
Not a lot, but yeah. I thought going for you, Jim.
You are a good man, man, it confused my mind for the next thing, so.
Keep you, keep you on it.
You're the best.
Ross is.
Uh huh.
There it is.
All right. Now we're assessors, perfect.
You're mumbling a lot tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, mumbling.
Maybe it's rumbling, I don't know.
You want that?
All right, we're gonna move on to the assessor, so Linda's with us tonight, she's gonna give us an update and questions on the new educational reform bill.
Hey, everyone, um. Yeah, so uh. Bill H four eighty four, I believe, is now act seventy three of two thousand twenty five. So there's an. They're assembling a working group of stakeholders. And this is going out to. They're gonna choose a twelve-member stakeholder group. With membership representing listers, assessors, municipal officials. And reappraisal contractors, so. I would really encourage people in the municipality to think about this. Um this is looking at. Uh the. Authority or authorities who will contract for and conduct reappraisals. The authority or authorities who will hear and decide property valuation appeals. Amendments necessary to conform statute to the change from an April first to January first grand list assessment date. That's kind of a big one. Um and any other recommended revisions to achieve a regionalized reappraisal system. And I think I mentioned at one time in the past that. This was probably gonna happen and follow along with the education districts. That will be forming as well. Um I've been invited to be one of the twelve stakeholders. And uh so what I'm looking for. If anyone is interested in also being a part of this, or if you have questions. On how this will come about or comments that would be taken to the stakeholder group. Um there'll be three ninety-minute meetings. Um. Uh I'm just looking at this email, the tax department will distribute, distribute an availability survey. Um that's just about times. Um. So basically what's happening is there needs to be a report compiled by January fifteenth of twenty twenty six. Um. And there will be a virtual property valuation and review town hall for. Everyone, anyone who has an interest. And at that point, the tax department will outline the recommendations uh that will be made. And just to hopefully open it up to a wider group of people, so. That's what I'm putting out there. Um I would like to accept this invitation um. To be asked to be one of twelve, I think is. Kind of an honor in a way. Um.
And this, this is statewide group or a regional group?
Uh statewide.
Do you have time going through the appraisal, reappraisal now to devote this?
So three meetings. Uh. Basically, um in the end of. August, the beginning and the end of September, um. I think, I think I can, just with where the reappraisal is right now. Um I think there'll be time. And uh I think I need to make time for one thing, um. This is gonna have a, a big effect on, well, the whole state. So um. Just seeing if there was anything else, um I didn't know if everyone, because she talks about. The municipal officials, if anyone else got this email. Um. So that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention. Um I did take part in a working group. In the fall, beginning of winter, that was uh about tax sales, and I. Was totally over my. My head, but I thought it was. Uh. Really interesting. I learned a lot about how these groups work and can be very beneficial. So. That's all I have, I just ask if, and if you do have questions. Um or comments or things you'd like to see talked about during these meetings, um. That you could pass them on, um. So. That's all I have.
So that's Sarah, um are the meetings virtual or do you have to go to my pillar?
Um they will be virtual.
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't have to travel.
Okay, and then, um you said there's three ninety-minute meetings, but I would assume there's also gonna be homework. Is there, is there any indication there that the board, the committee members are going to be asked to do research or? I'm just asking in terms of your, the time commitment for you, if it's more than three ninety-minute meetings.
Right, so it says the first week of November, the department. Will distribute a draft report with recommendations and legislative language to the. To the working group to collect written feedback. So. I mean, I do have a copy of the bill as it was last. Voted on, which I've been sort of perusing, um. So at that. Right, so then in early December, that's the um, virtual town hall meeting that it was talked about, so. There'll probably be some reading, I would imagine, uh, to be familiar with. Uh, the bill is itself, which I have a little bit. Of an idea, I, like I say, I'm still. Perusing it.
Other comments? I, I just, we're very, I think it's a big honor to be asked, I agree with you completely, um, I just. It's really important to keep up with what's going on into in Dover, and I, I think it's important for. Southern Vermont to have some voice, because I, hopefully they went out and invited people from uh, across. Across the state, um, not all in County, not all the wherever, but, um. But it is gonna be, i- it is gonna put more things on your plate for sure. Other comments?
Well, I think, I, I would agree, I would agree with, with what Vicky said. I don't, I don't, as long as you're comfortable that. It won't keep you from doing the other things you have to do here. Um, you know, that's, that's kind of your judgment, I think. That's, that's mine.
I mean, I've, I've had an ongoing sort of part in this from. From the get-go and uh. I would like to see it through. Um.
Yes, Joe.
I, I have a question, so this is the fact that the state is going to do. Eventually our statewide appraisal. So we're stakeholders in the process that they're gonna ultimately do this, and they want information and, and. To be able to do it correctly and. Is that what this is all about, I assume, in legislation, because that's the route they're, they're headed? So this is not, that's trying to. Uh. Stop this, I assume. Or decide whether to do it, it's just a way to help. Organize the state to do it in a thoughtful method, so the taxpayers are heard, correct? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, when, there's no, yeah, it's a dumb deal.
I just wanna make sure, perfect.
Yep.
I don't know.
Okay, um, I guess I'm here, no, we're not gonna, so just now it's gonna put, it will put more on your plate, so.
Yeah.
But.
No, I get it.
What you're doing here is the most important thing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thanks.
Thanks. Alright, now we're gonna move to economic development, the Q four ED update.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, so send an update, uh, the one percent payment received in, on May seventh. Um, it was for four hundred and six thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and six cents. It was almost a seven percent increase over last year's payment. Um, which is now the largest single payment we've ever received. Um, I did talk a lot about this data and, and this group can buy it on. It's hard to track uh, quarter to quarter, year to year, because. The locals change, but um, hopefully that continues to. Trend on an increase there, um, just a few other updates from the quarter, on the biggest one. Uh, short-term rental registrations launched in April, um, so we also brought in revenue for a hundred and thirty-six. Registrations, um. Which is about half of what we need to cover the website costs for the year. So we're getting, we're getting through that, um. Others that we already know, things we already did in these meetings, um, that's really the biggest, um. Thing everybody looks for is what was that one percent payment? Um, so that's mostly what happened in fourth quarter. Um, and that's all I have or not to, I raise questions on that.
Questions?
Okay.
Yes.
Um, on the STR registrations, um, do you feel like they're. Moving about where you would have expected they would have been at this point, I mean, a hundred and thirty-six, I remember hearing numbers, we've got four of them.
Since April to June, we could get about thirty-five more July so far. Um, I think it's moving from where I came in. Right after that first letter had launched, um, I think it's moving fairly well considering how tricky. It is then technologically speaking, um, we seem to have fixed a lot of those challenges. Um, and so we're getting to the point now that we can actually. I can start to reach out to people who have not received, um, or have not registered after receiving the final letter, which went out. Uh, about three weeks ago, so, um, it feels slow, but also. There was a lot of challenges to getting it actually, and so I think it feels pretty good. Um, from best I can tell on people I've talked to, uh. I think we're maybe around forty percent of the people that should register. Have started that process, so, um, that feels pretty good, um. But yes, it would be nice if it was a little faster, but. We're, we're moving, um, so yeah, that's the one, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
And some weird ones.
Okay, now we're gonna move on, thanks Shannon, just, we're gonna do disc golf course maintenance.
Yeah, so, um, we put in a meeting, this call course, um, and we didn't really plan. For the maintenance of it, um, I guess we. Were kind of relying on volunteers to get out and take care of that, um, I did talk to some of those people. I talked to the course designer, um, we have a tournament coming in September, um, it's hosted by the course designer. And, um, I guess there's really some things we should have been doing. From spring, well, early on, so everything I've learned in my craft course and just well maintenance. Um, is we shook up and, uh. The fairways, um, there's a lot of foreign roof, and so we should have been. Uh, trying to get rid of those heavily on in the spring. Um, and that the first two or three years that you have a course in a wooded area is the heaviest amount maintenance. Um, just to keep those airways clear, um, so, um. Obviously, we must have been doing on spring, it's now summer, um, so I did talk to, uh, some of those volunteers. I talked to Brooke from City Austin, who does the rest of course maintenance. Um, I talked to Travis to see if this was something that we could be doing, um, and it is not, so. Uh, what I'm hoping to do is kind of two poles, um. We need to clear the fairways for this tournament, um, and also for everybody's use, that's something we've. Um, but it needs to happen for this event in September sixth, um, and then I think at this point. Since we cannot do it in-house, um, I guess I need to request bids from some people. Um, for a one-time, like, clearing of, um, keeping those service clear, getting that patient back. Um, and then look to it again in the fall, um. If we needed at that time to set up an actual like maintenance contract moving forward. Um, just to keep this course in the condition it should be in, um, so. I was hoping that Travis would be like, oh no, about this, um, or that Brooke would say, oh yeah. It's just this, I can do this, um, but it's a little more involved than that, um, so. Um, I would like to reach out to some people and I think because it's. It's an interesting situation, like, there's not a lot of disc golf maintenance people probably, but there are certainly some. Maybe landscaping, um, contractors that can do some of it, um, and there are some trails people, um, so I think I need to. Post or request for a bid, and see what we get, um, it's a tight turnaround, because. If you want, make sure that we can post this tournament, ensure that those. Um, but also talking to some, um, people who have been out there, we're not. We're not getting the caliber of players that we should for the course we have, just because it's not as clear. Um, I've gotten some feedback that we will go out and try it and. Just wanna make sure we're taking care of that.
Joe, you have been.
Yeah. So, uh, it sounds, the, the fairways, I assume, like. Closer to the hole needs to be cleared around X, Y, Z yards or feet is what you're.
So. The sh- like the shot to it, so, um, yes, obviously around the basket it needs to be there, but how they get from. Where they start to where they finish on each.
So if we're gonna have a tournament, you know, you want someone that's gonna do it and do it right, so you look. You know, it's probably measuring and, and making sure whatever.
I think at this point, it's literally just hours of weed whacking, everybody I talk to said that.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, Dan.
Hours.
On a normal basis, do you think this is something that has to be done, like landscaping every week for two weeks or something?
So, um, yeah, what I learned is in the first few years, it's more often, and so maybe like a monthly. Situation after you have done once, um, but then a few years into it, we do reach the point where a volunteer group. Would be happy to maintain it with like a trail work day, a couple of times a year, the fall and spring, um. We just have to stay on top of it enough to encourage it to keep clear, um, and then locally it's. It's a little more.
And more time, there more needs traffic.
Yes, yes, and that's part of it too, so if we clear it, then more people will be out there walking on it and then.
So hopefully, this is the trap, can't use it, they're not gonna trap it.
And that's a bummer, so I want, I want to bring it back, um, so that's what I think I need to do. We need to do a preparation for September and then. Once fall comes, looking at it again, um. With some other input and. Setting up some regular schedule here for it.
Other comments? Um. Does the board want Shannon to receive bids?
Yes. I was really hoping I'd be like, here's three things I got, but that's it.
I think your bid, with a bid thing like that, it's. It's really gonna be a time of material thing, because no one's gonna know. I mean, or they're gonna give you a crazy high bid. Is from the weed whacking experience I have. So just be aware of that, I really would like to have some people that are utilizing it step up and. Help so that we have some, you know, user relief.
And I think there is a great group of people that are definitely understand that and are happy to help do that. But we're not in a place right now where that's natural.
Okay, but that's the, thank you Shannon, anything else? Thank you. Alright, now we're gonna need to go to the Board of Liquor Control.
Make a motion, we go to the Board of Liquor Control.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, hi. Um, I make a motion. That we approve the following license.
I can wait until she's done or you.
Is it relevant to the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, then you should go first.
So, um. Trail eighty-seven, we, the way the liquor licenses work now is through a statewide portal. The portal is horrendous, it's the most awful thing you've ever tried to, it's horrible, anyways. Um, you know, so, uh, folks apply through the portal, their applications show up. On my portal, on my computer, I print them out, and you guys approve them, right? They gotta be, they gotta be applied for, uh, and in my portal by Thursday, so it can be warned for your meeting, right? Uh, Mike to Julio, uh, Trail eighty-seven, apply for three permits, according to Mike. The third class, yes, like consumption in the first class, which are all expired. Only two showed up in my portal, the outside consumption in the third class. So he called me yesterday or whatever, I was like, nah, just to make sure everything was good, I said, I don't have any first class. Well, I applied for it when I applied for the other. Oh. He then applied through the portal, I printed it out, it's not worn. His other two permits were worn, I'm asking you to approve the first class with. The third and outside consumption that were worn. Um. I suppose in my mind, warning liquor licenses for Trail eighty-seven and not actually specifically mentioning which ones. Would have been sufficient, but it's not our custom to do that, so I'm just asking. For some grace for a guy who I think, uh, had trouble with a very difficult. Stay. Uh, software program.
Okay.
Sarah, wait, she had her hand up, you did not.
As a parliamentarian.
Yes.
Are we okay doing this?
Um, I feel that you are, I feel that anybody who had a problem with the liquor license of Trail eighty-seven. Would have showed up tonight, regardless of whether it's a first, third, outside consumption or whatever, I think you could.
Okay, now Joe.
I have, I have no problem if they put in two others and the ones just they get through what's. And I get that we're not one of those.
So Sarah, would you re- like to retract or, um?
I didn't even finish. Oh, yeah, apparently I got started before you raised your hands, I'm just gonna do overtime.
Okay, okay, very good.
Alright, so I make a motion that we approve the following liquor licenses. Um, second-class license and tobacco license for Black Diamond Bar and Grill. A first-class, third-class, and outside consumption permit for Alpine Kitchen LLC DBA Trail Eighty-seven. And a request to cater permit for Deerfield Beverage Concepts LLC for an event July eighteenth, this Friday. Subject to receipt of fees and all required documents.
And you added Trail eighty-seven?
I did.
Okay.
Therefore, yeah.
And one? All.
I already. As soon as I start making the motion to go liquor control, I just stare at him, you know, say, tell me stuff.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion to come out?
I make a motion we come out of the Board of Liquor Control.
Thanks very much.
We need to approve the minutes of July first.
I make a motion for the minute of July first, twenty twenty-five.
All via some platform, yes, the second. Second by Patrick, any changes or corrections? All in favor?
Make a motion to approve the warrants of July fifth for three hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-three cents.
All in favor? We have FYI, we have a thank you letter from Deerfield Valley Community Cares, uh, dear s- dear sirs. On behalf of the DVCC, I want to thank you for your continued support, donations for the. From the local towns and some businesses, along with grants that I apply for, and the generosity of many. Of our, our local neighbors, help us keep our, our fund able to respond to the needs. Of. Our less fortunate citizens, many of those people are seniors on fixed income. That are no longer able to keep up with the ever-increasing cost of living, thank you again for your support, sincerely, Sue Spangler. Very nice, thank you Sue. Wyndham Regional Plan Update. Public hearings, um, virtually or, uh, in person. July twenty-second at noon, July twenty-fourth at six P M in Brannenborough and Bia Zoo. Dover Water Task Force Forum at Dover Town Hall, July twenty-third at six P M. We have planning commission in July twenty-eighth at six thirty P M. And more concerts, summer concerts in the park. July twenty, Kevin and the Surf Casters, July twenty-third, Wild Nights, and August third, Groot Prophet. Anything else to add to the calendar of events? Blueberry Festival is coming.
The, the reunion. The Wilmington, Whittingham, Twin Valley. Reunion is coming this. So. Twenty-six.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, the ISO reports?
Nope.
We didn't have, we don't have an executive session, but I'd like to adjourn the meeting at seven forty P M. Wait.
To start with. Get on this.
Yeah, yeah. You want to stay?